Welcome everybody to the meeting of Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 10th, 2004. Welcome everybody to Council Chambers. We are being broadcast on Channel 35, rebroadcast this evening and also being simulcast on Council Phone. Madam Clerk, if you can please call the role.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Leddo, Miskowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present and a core Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minute.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Sign moves and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, I believe there are several presentations today. Do you wish to take those up first?
Yes, let's do the presentations first. I'd like to recognize Council Member Alex Padilla for our first presentation.
Good morning colleagues, members of the public who are here with us and everybody watching at home. It's my honor to conduct the following two presentations this morning. As we all know tomorrow, November 11th is a federal holiday. It's the day of the year that we've designated to take a time out, reflect, and give tribute to the men and women of the military who have served our country in times of conflict, in times of peace, but nonetheless have gone above and beyond their call of duty to protect our country and our freedom. What sometimes unfortunately is in the shadow of the Veterans Day holiday is the anniversary of the United States Marine Corps where indeed it was on November 10th, 1775, a year before this country declared its independence, that the Marines were formed. And today, the first of our two presentations is in celebration of United States Marine Corps Week, celebrating yet again another anniversary of the Corps and the wonderful tradition and commitment to excellence that they embody. It's my honor to be surrounded by the Marines and to present this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Let me just read a couple of the whereas clauses and ask for representative to come forward and accept this. Whereas the United States Marine Corps has protected citizens and guarded our freedom for the past 229 years, and whereas our country has established a position of world leadership, the Marines have proven themselves as dedicated professionals willing to defend lives and protect the rights of valued Americans. Whereas a Marine is trained to hold his ground against any odds and always be faithful to God, country, and the Corps standing
Good morning. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting of Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 10th, 2004. Welcome, everybody, to council chambers. We are being broadcast on Channel 35, rebroadcast this evening, and also being simulcast on council phone. Madam Clerk, if you can please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Leddo, Miskowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present, and a core Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Approval of the minute.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves, Ms. Perry seconds. They're approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, I believe there are several presentations today. Do you wish to take those up first?
Yes, let's do the presentations first. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Alex Padilla for our first presentation.
Good morning, colleagues, members of the public who are here with us and everybody watching at home. It's my honor to conduct the following two presentations this morning. As we all know, tomorrow, November 11th, is a federal holiday. It's the day of the year that we've designated to take a time out, reflect, and give tribute to the men and women of the military who have served our country in times of conflict, in times of peace, but nonetheless have gone above and beyond their call of duty to protect our country and our freedom. What sometimes unfortunately is in the shadow of the Veterans Day holiday is the anniversary of the United States Marine Corps, where indeed it was on November 10th, 1775, a year before this country declared its independence, that the Marines were formed. And today, the first of our two presentations is in celebration of United States Marine Corps Week, celebrating yet again another anniversary of the Corps and the wonderful tradition and commitment to excellence that they embody. It's my honor to be surrounded by the Marines and to present this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Let me just read a couple of the whereas clauses and ask for representative to come forward and accept this. Whereas the United States Marine Corps has protected citizens and guarded our freedom for the past 229 years, and whereas our country has established a position of world leadership, the Marines have proven themselves as dedicated professionals, willing to defend lives and protect the rights of valued Americans. Whereas a Marine is trained to hold his ground against any odds and always be faithful to God, country, and the Corps, standing ready to fight anytime, anywhere, the President or Congress may designate. Whereas the term Marine has been associated with courage and military efficiency since its creation on November 10th, 1775, in Philadelphia. And whereas in Los Angeles, 57 years ago, part of our city's history, they showed another caring side by launching the Toys for Tots program to ensure that needy children receive gifts during the holiday season. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, city attorney, and controller, that the week of November 14th through 20th, 2004, is hereby declared United States Marine Corps Week in the city of Los Angeles in celebration of the Corps' 229th birthday, and that residents are urged to give thanks and respect to the Corps for selfless and courageous service to our country. Gentlemen, congratulations.[658.54][658.54](APPLAUSE).
While you're with them, we have two council members who'd like to speak. Ms. Padilla, okay. First, Ms. Han, to be followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Alex, for giving us an opportunity to say thank you, really, to the men and women who are engaged right now in fighting war, and it's great to see the Marines here this morning and give us an opportunity to say face-to-face thank you. Thank you for what you do. And for those of you who have an LA Times close by, there are some incredible dramatic photos taken today, or in the paper today, of the Alpha Company, the 1st Battalion, 8th Marine Regiment, and the Charlie Company of the 1st Battalion, 8th Marine Regiment. And my staff member, Carolyn Brady-Sinko, her husband, Louis Sinko, is a photographer and has been sending back these unbelievable reports of the courage, of the bravery, of the unbelievable danger that the Marines are in right now in Fallujah. And it's brought it home to my staff, it's certainly brought it home to this young mother with three girls at home, whose husband is a photographer and is embedded with the Marines at this point. We've all got a new respect for the Marines, we've all got a new respect for the incredible danger, and we hear it all the time, you put your life on the line on a daily basis, but we know that is in fact true, and we know we are losing lives on a daily basis there, and we want to thank you for what you're doing for the cause of freedom somewhere else in the world. So, thank you, and thanks, Alex, for letting us say thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Those were wonderful words by Ms. Han, and Mr. Padilla, thank you for bringing these great Americans, these great Marines, of which two grew up, one in Silmar and one in Bell Gardens, and one from Atlanta and Louisiana, and all around the world, because your father was in the service. But that's what makes up our service members, but the Marines, United States Marines, and 229th, older than the city of Los Angeles, the Corps, and always to be called for in harm's way. And as Ms. Han spoke of this relationship that your staff and your Louis Sinko brings life to capture the work of, the challenge that Marines are facing in other parts of the world. I just wanted to thank Mr. Padilla for bringing all of you in, and I got a chance to personally meet you, but thank you, because you're answering this country's call and the greatest service, and there's nobody like the Marines, and there's nothing but Marines, and I salute the Marines, and thank you for your service to this country, each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I just want to also acknowledge the fine work of our military. You folks work very difficult times, very difficult challenges, and it's a pleasure, obviously, to be here in the city of Los Angeles and have the duty that you have at this time, but many of you and many of your colleagues are in combat, in battle, and we know what they go through, and we see the television report. So our hearts go out to you and your families. You're doing a great job for the people to keep our liberties and freedoms that we all enjoy here. And Councilman Padilla, thank you for bringing us forward. I know there's a parade tomorrow, there's also an event at Forest Lawn, so the military will be recognized and duly honored tomorrow by all Angelenos. Congratulations, and God bless all you, and keep safe.[895.86][895.86](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
I do have one more resolution to present before asking these gentlemen to speak. As Mr. Zine mentioned, the timing is everything, and a big part of the reason why we're here today and what drove us to these presentations is the inaugural parade tomorrow. Congressman Howard Berman and I have joined forces, if you will, to help organize, along with the planning committee, the first annual San Fernando Valley Veterans Day Parade. We know that across our country, there are a few large-scale events that give tribute to our veterans, but here in Los Angeles, the second-largest city in America, we don't have that. We have the Veterans Administration Cemetery on the West Side, there's certainly an annual event at the Forest Lawn Cemetery, right in the shadow of Griffith Park. So we're hoping to pay respect to our veterans and our military service heritage here in Los Angeles. By launching this parade, you're all invited to come, and we do have memorial pins coming around to each and every one of you. In putting the parade together and organizing a committee to take care of all the logistics, we did a little bit of homework and have decided to not only pay respect to all veterans who have served our country by way of this parade, but one in particular who has roots here in Los Angeles, Corporal William T. Perkins. Corporal Perkins is the son of William T. Perkins, who couldn't be here today, he lives in Northern California, but the family is represented. Corporal Perkins's father, William T. Perkins, Sr., was a bomber pilot in World War II. Corporal Perkins, Jr., attended Suplova Middle School in the San Fernando Valley, actually Suplova Junior High at the time, and graduated from James Monroe High School. Mr. Labange, you'd like the trivia. Graduated from James Monroe High School in 1965, prior to joining the military. Craig Ingram is here, who was the best friend of Corporal Perkins, Jr. Corporal Perkins was posthumously awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor, our nation's highest honor, and is the only combat photographer to receive this award. He received it, as I understand the story, because the platoon he was working with was under attack, a grenade came into short range, and as a photographer, colleagues, not an armed fighter, but as a photographer, warned the other Marines of the grenade, took it upon himself to dive upon the grenade. It took his life, but in doing so, saved the life of the men and women he was serving with. There is no higher recognition and honor that our Congress bestows upon a soldier and for his service and sacrifice to our country and to his colleagues. We're also proud, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, to present this resolution posthumously to Corporal William T. Perkins. And let me call up to accept this and to speak on behalf of the family, Craig and Deborah Ingram, best friends, as I mentioned, of Corporal Perkins, Major Matthew Groze, commanding officer of G Company, 2nd Battalion, 23rd Marines, Major Jeffrey Nyheart, director of the Marine Corps Public Affairs Office here in Los Angeles, and Staff Sergeant Sergio Jimenez, Public Affairs Chief, Marine Corps Public Affairs Office, right here in Los Angeles as well.[1120.21][1120.21](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. My name is Craig Ingram, and Bill was my best friend. I have a few words from Bill's father, if you will. Bill's dad couldn't be with us today, he lives up in Northern California, and wasn't feeling well, so he asked me to say a few words on behalf of him. First off, he wanted to say that Bill volunteered to accompany the 1st Marines during Operation Medina, this was October 11th, 1967. He was a combat photographer, and as such, he was with the 3rd Marine Division. He volunteered to go out on Operation Medina, and as the survivors of Operation Medina, who I've spoken to and interviewed, said, "Bill didn't have to be there that day, he chose to be there." During the course of strong enemy attack the next day, on the 12th, they were outnumbered at least three to one by North Vietnamese Army regulars. During the course of the attack, hand grenades figured very prominently in this battle. It was a very small area that they were fighting in. If you can imagine, 165 Marines in an area probably no smaller than this chambers, which was a landing zone for a helicopter. And they were surrounded on three sides, with mountains on the far side. They had no place to go, and they fought all night long. But on the afternoon of the 12th, in the middle of the first attack, I'm sorry, there was a lull in the fighting, and during the second attack, a hand grenade landed on the other side of a fallen tree that Bill was laying behind with three of his fellow Marines, and still holding his motion picture camera, he yelled the command grenade and leapt over this fallen tree and wrapped himself, still holding his motion picture camera, wrapped himself around this hand grenade, and absorbed the explosion with his body, thus giving his life to save the lives of his comrades. That's the kind of a person that Bill was. And finally, Bill's father wanted me to tell you that he was a loving son, and he was my good friend, and he will always live on in the hearts of his family and friends, and in the hearts of the men whose lives he saved with his heroic sacrifice that day. And finally, Bill's dad wanted me to thank all of our servicemen and women for their continuing sacrifice in the defense of our country. Semper Fidelis. Thank you.[1268.83][1268.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Please.
Good morning. I'd just like to say a couple words. Councilmember Padilla, on behalf of my Marines and I, we are honored and privileged to accept this award today and be here for this presentation. And I would just like to extend my gratitude and thanks to the city of Los Angeles and to the council for your continued support over the years. And I believe, as many of my Marines do, who have all served overseas, both in combat and during peacetime operations, that it is because of your support that we continue to be able to accomplish our mission and sometimes make that ultimate sacrifice to preserve the freedoms that we enjoy back here. So I'll thank you from the bottom of my heart. Today is a great day, it's the 229th birthday of the Marine Corps, and I hope you have a great Veterans Day.[1334.61][1334.61](APPLAUSE).
Gentlemen, thank you very much.[1343.98][1343.98](APPLAUSE). Just a reminder, colleagues, despite what we may think politically or personally about what's going on overseas right now, it's not just about statistics, it's not just about headlines, it's about people, men and women, like the individuals who are here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Padilla, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presence here today in City Council. For our second presentation, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The auspicious group you see standing here with me today has a number of individuals you know, and some you perhaps don't know but need to know. You may recognize Richard Slosson, Sergio Roscon, Red Martinez, and with us, we also have Manny Perez, Labor Compliance Officer from Bureau of Contract Administration, George Stofila, Bureau of Contract Administration, Chris Smith from the Bureau of Contract Administration, Cheryl Mitchell, Job Developer from Playa Vista Jobs, Ernest Roberts, Director of PV Jobs, Ted Budd, Vice President of Kenny Construction Company, Baron Mia, Senior Civil Engineer from the Bureau of Engineering, Ray Vandernot, an attorney, and Mr. Edkar Jones. And they're here to celebrate the ESIS, that is the East Side Central Interceptor Sewer Project. I've been saying ESIS for so many years, I forgot what it meant. Project Labor Agreement. This was the first major project agreement in the city of Los Angeles, and it resulted in more than 350 Angelenos being recruited to work on ESIS construction. Approximately 100 of these workers came from within a half-mile of the ESIS route. The training for these jobs was provided by the unions representing ESIS workers. Additionally, a new training program was set up for at-risk people. About 24 men and women who learned new skills are now union workers. I think we'll all agree today, after hearing Mr. Slosson and Mr. Roscon speak, that this project should serve and can serve as a model for all city projects. And so with that, I'd like to give them a big applause and then ask Mr. Slosson and Mr. Roscon to speak and tell you a little more detail.[1541.01][1541.01](APPLAUSE).
On behalf of all of the workers on the project, first of all, we want to give our thanks and thank you very much to the Board of Public Works in the city of Los Angeles, City Council, for recognizing their hard work in seeing this project completed. Hundreds of millions of dollars were expended to upgrade and expand the sewer system related to this project for the city of Los Angeles, and it was necessary to have city workers, city residents work on this project. It provided new jobs, new opportunities, training opportunities for residents in the city. It provided opportunities for labor and management to work together to see that we could outreach to those who have not had the advantages of good training, skills enhancement, that labor and management provide through state and federally-approved apprenticeship programs here in Los Angeles and throughout the state of Los Angeles. The state of California. The project went well, it was completed on time, labor and management worked well together to solve issues that arose during the project, and there were issues. But that's why we're here celebrating the Project Labor Agreement today, because this gives labor and management and the owner input into issues that arise and a way and a method, a mandatory method of settlement. Of the one or two major issues that we had, we even wound up in grievances, but it did not affect the project moving forward. It's a testament to its completion on time that labor and management can work together, and thank you very much to the city once again for participating and giving us the opportunity to show that these Project Labor Agreements work, that they provide these many opportunities to local workers, and we hope to do many more with the city of Los Angeles. Thank you to Commissioner Shaw, to Councilwoman Perry for making this presentation today, and it's my hat's off to everyone involved, Ted Budd with the contractors, Baron Mia, the chief engineer, Manny Perez, who all worked in concert with us, and we are really thrilled and excited to be here today. Thank you again.[1703.83][1703.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilwoman Jan Perry, for giving us the opportunity to be here, council members. It is an honor, indeed, on behalf of Labor's Local 300 to be here, and my colleagues from other trades. This is a success story, but nothing goes forward without the actual vision and the understanding of people that will actually put it together and work with you in order to make it happen. And that credit goes to Valerie Lynn Shaw, that has worked very hard, and also Manny Perez, and of course, so many other people that are key in getting together and listening to the facts that we do have in order to make this work. And obviously, this is going to go forward based on the facts that it was successful, not only for the city, but for the community, for the people that we work so hard to make sure that they get the decent wage and the decent package of benefits. That's what keeps people motivated to stay where they belong, working and taking care of their families, without having the teamwork that takes all of the necessary factors in Without having the teamwork that takes all of the necessary factors in order to make this happen, then we wouldn't get anywhere. So once again, I thank each and every one of you that has cooperated and will continue to cooperate to make sure that we get a better package as we have in order to keep these people working and in order to keep us as organized labor, working hard for not only the people that we represent as they become priority, but the community as a whole, because without the community, the organized labor is nothing. So once again, I thank you very much.
This is Ted Budd, and Ted is the Vice President of Kenny Construction Company.
Thank you. On behalf of the contractors, the numerous subcontractors, and of course, all of the many workers on the ESIS project, I'd like to thank the city of Los Angeles for the opportunity, and most important, for the Bureau of Public Works under the direction of Valerie Shaw, for the very successful Project Labor Agreement that brought a lot of people that would not have the opportunity to get in the mainstream of work to get there. I'd also like to congratulate the complete team, including the whole team at the Bureau of Public Works, for their effort to make the ESIS project a success. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We have a few other council members that would like to also add their congratulations. And congratulations, Ms. Perry, and to all the folks that were part of this historic day. As we look at passage, I know Ms. Perry and I and others, and Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weiss, others worked very hard on Proposition O. It really establishes a good way of us looking forward, and we appreciate your work on that. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just rise to congratulate Valerie Shaw and her leadership in this work, all the unions and all the staff to reach this level of accomplishment, and to give us this example, this demonstration of how we can work together. But on another level, the areas you serve, the areas you improve physically, we're making a very, very loud statement that finally we're paying attention to those corridors and those areas in the city that have traditionally been overlooked for so many decades. And it can't get any more significant than dealing with the whole sewer process, the sewer system, the infrastructure. So not only is it the jobs, which has been eloquently stated by Mr. Roscon and Mr. Slosson and the other representatives, but it's also the physical improvement that goes hand-in-hand with the potential of being able to move up the economic and social ladder because of the presence of the unions. And for that, I want to thank you, for all the residents in these areas who have been waiting for many, many years for these kinds of improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
I also too would like to thank you professionals, both the businesses who hire professionals like yourself, the workers who actually get the work done, and also the professionals who are out there every single day. And I keep using the word professional because a lot of people think that because if you're a laborer, if you're a carpenter, if you're using your back, you're not a professional. That's just not true. You have to be aware of your surroundings. It's a very dangerous job. You have to have skills, and you just can't get out there from one day to the next and get the work done. And in my opinion, we have the best of the best right here in our community, and you represent that. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Eric Garcetti and Jan Perry for leading the charge in educating the voters, and the voters came through for us, and the taxpayers are going to come through for us, on about $500 million in storm drain work that is badly needed in this city. And as a matter of fact, we got to this place because people successfully brought us to task and took us to court and said, "You've got to fix this. The people of Los Angeles deserve better," and they do. So I want to take this opportunity and thank you, Jan, and also Eric, for the work that you did to make sure that we got the truth out, and now we're able to do that project. Anybody back there, raise your hand if you do storm drains as well. Anybody back there do storm drains as well? Yeah, I thought so. I thought so. Once again, thank you to the professionals. Now it's going to be in your hands to get the job done. And once again, to get things done on time, to make sure that people don't lose their lives in those dangerous jobs, you know how to do that. You've been doing it for many years. And Local 300, thank you so much for still being around and representing your membership. As my father was a Local 300 laborer, a professional with a first-grade education, but a professional who was able to feed a family of 11 on this union wages. So thank you very much for your job.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Parks, sorry, Ms. Gruel and Mr. Parks. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, and I just want to congratulate everybody for really being the model of excellence and showing people what a Project Labor Agreement means. And what that means is good jobs, what that means is a project that comes in on time, on budget. What that means is no work stoppages. What that means is we're able to deliver to the public a project which is more efficient and more economical by having a Project Labor Agreement. Let me just say to all that we have in the city attorney's office right now an ordinance that has been pushed by the mayor that will make a citywide ordinance that says on public projects, there will be Project Labor Agreements. That is a good thing. And it's great to have this project to point to, and why is it a good thing? And we're going to make sure that that Project Labor Agreement ordinance covers a port of Los Angeles. That's something Dick Slosson has been talking to me about before I got elected, was making sure that those projects are also under a Project Labor Agreement. Thank you to all. Thank you for proving what you all have been saying all these years. It really does make for a better project that is more accountable to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker, and then Mr. Labange.
It's hard to follow Ms. Hahn. She was so articulate about the success of this and the importance of this type of partnership, the importance of the Project Labor Agreement and the demonstration that we can do things in Los Angeles with labor and a city government to make sure it's the best project and to be proud of. And I always talk about government efficiency not being oxymoron, and this proves that we can do projects. We can be efficient, and we can do it together, and it's because of all of you that are standing there and your leadership and your willingness to work together, roll up your sleeves and make this project work, and to thank Ms. Perry for recognizing them all today in council. This is just the beginning of a number of projects where we can stand up and be proud of our successes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, each and every one of you, and we learn from lessons like this. I think many of my colleagues eloquently spoke about the relationships and working together and the teamwork. But the great thing is, is at the end of the day, you built something right for the people of Los Angeles that's going to stand, that's going to make a difference that probably 99% of all the people won't think of the work that all the workers did on it. They'll just use the facility because that's the urban environment, the infrastructure, but because of the hard work of the joint labor management and so forth. Ms. Perry, I thank you for your leadership because you've always been a tiger. Give Jan a big hand on that. And all of you there, individual thank you. Congratulations. And this Sunday, if you have a family dinner at your home, show up your certificate. Make sure that they all know how proud we are of each and every one of you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I need to comment, and I think I'll probably at the end of the trail on this. Win-win. Win-win is the same as labor management. Those projects that come together, everyone wins. Labor wins, the city wins, the people win, we all win. So congratulations to the unions for making it happen. Thanks to Jan Perry with her vision to bring this about, and for all of you that are in that labor movement. I came from the PPL, and I know how difficult it is sometimes when you don't have those mutual win-win philosophies, and that's what we advocate. Everyone benefits, everyone goes home saying, "We did a good job, and we're well compensated for what we did for the people of Los Angeles." So congratulations to all of you, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zine.
Thank you very much to all my colleagues, and I just want to close by saying, I feel very blessed and very fortunate to be able to stand here with these individuals today because I believe that downtown is experiencing an unprecedented amount of new construction and construction with adaptive reuse buildings. But we have major projects on the book. I know that in the 11th, there is the airport expansion, and that will probably be one of the largest public works projects in the next 10 to 15 years. But for myself here in the 9th Council District in downtown, downtown which is the most significant employer for the region, I would argue, we have the Grand Avenue project in the works, the LA Live, the Convention Center Hotel pending, and I believe that we are poised to become the city that we've been talking about for the last decade. And we have a special opportunity here for those projects that enjoy the benefit of public support. We have an opportunity to reach an agreement like we have here today to the benefit of all of the families of Los Angeles, those who build, those who are business, private sector, and all of us here in government and in the public sector, to bring all of those forces to bear to the benefit of all. And I think that's what this means more than anything here today, that these folks, these gentlemen and lady behind me, were able to reach an agreement to help people who might not have otherwise had that opportunity, people who had minimal to no skills, to have that opportunity to be able to work on a project of this magnitude and to be able to carry that newly acquired skill with them to the next opportunity that will present itself. And that's how we can transform people's lives, working together in a collaborative fashion. So I also want to say thank you and salute you and that you have my respect as well and my deep appreciation. Thank you so much.
Please, Mr. Slosson.
I just wanted to let everyone know that other unions that were a major part of the project are here as well. Operating Engineers Local 12 is represented here today. The Teamsters District Council is represented, and IBW Local 11 is also represented and received awards for their participation in the project today as well. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, everybody. That finishes that order of business for our commendatory resolutions and presentations. I'd like to introduce at this time, from Alessandro Elementary School, I'd like to give a great welcome, straight out of the 13th District, to 36 students, three adults, led by Lupe Medina. And this entire student council is here. Please give them a round of applause and welcome all the kids from Alessandro. And you can watch yourselves tonight if your parents have cable on Channel 35. So if everybody waves, you can pick yourself out. All right. Welcome and keep up the great work at Alessandro. All right, next order of business, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. I'd like to call forward at this time Irene Casmer, to be followed by Sherwin Ross and Jerry Pittman and Shirley Ash. If you'd like to line up behind the podium, now is time for public comment. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sherwin Ross. Been in the garment business for about 20 years, and I created the One Clothing Company. Went to $100 million and changed the face of the junior clothing industry in California and the United States. I'm here today, I'm honored, to ask you to pay special attention to the Los Angeles Museum of Designers and Creators. The Los Angeles fashion industry is the number-one employer in Southern California, and the museum has had a motion in front of you since June 22nd, 2001. We're asking that you help us house the museum's 250,000 museum-quality pieces that consist of collections of famous designers, books, and artifacts from the 1800s till today. This collection features the California fashion industry. Please read and take care of what we have brought you and is in front of you today. Thank you. The museum will bring more jobs to Southern California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Shirley Ash, and I'm an active designer and friend of MODAC. I have 30 years in the fashion industry here in Los Angeles, and California being integrated into Pacific Rim is fast becoming the leader in the fashion industry. Excuse me. The fashion industry is the number-one employer in Southern California and the fifth-largest economy in the world. It is our belief as Friends of MODAC that the Los Angeles Museum of Designers and Creators will celebrate and promote the culture and heritage of the city of Los Angeles. The museum will create jobs. It will keep downtown area alive and vibrant, which can only be an asset and benefit to the expansion and development of our great and growing city of Los Angeles in maintaining its history and culture. And we ask your help in providing a place for us to do this. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Jerry Pittman, and I also have been very active in the fashion garment industry here in Los Angeles for about 25 years. I've worked with manufacturers of fabric, which is also a very big part of the industry, and it's a very tough industry at the moment. So there's many people who've worked here and worked very hard, and I would like to support the museum so that these people get recognition. There are many people who work every day, and I really believe in the city of Los Angeles. I've lived here for a long time. I love to come downtown and see the progress, and I love to see the progress in my district, which is Mr. Labange's district, because I know we support the parks, we support the schools, we have beautiful new libraries. But we need a museum for this specific, very important industry in our city. And I think what I want to express today is how vibrant it is, because not only do we have a collection of all these pieces, there are continually new gifts to the museum. I have an entire collection of magazines that would fill half of this wall that I have no place to put, and he was a pattern maker for 35 years downtown, and he wants to give these to the museum. So if I had a space to put them, they would be there. Irene recently got new drawings from Christine Albers. We have new things from Timmy Woods. We have new things from Carol Little. But we need a space to put this. So thank you. We have a cheering.
Good morning. It's such a pleasure always to listen to you all, honorable council members, and honoring the deserving people, and I am proud with you. I am here today to say hello and to talk about, I am partnering, the museum is partnering with NOHO. Did everybody see his honor Labange on the cover? And any of you want to be on the cover, please write in. We will have you interviewed and give you a cover. And we are in every library in downtown, from downtown to Beverly Hills, to Santa Monica, to the Valley, to Silver Lake. Please make sure you call NOHO and our me and get on the cover and tell us the story, how your district is doing. I just wanted to say hello, and I'm here for another agenda, and I hope you call us, which is Agenda 34. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for listening to us. And you do know, this is Irene Casmer, and I'm in the industry. Shall I tell the truth? 56 years. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Crook, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number one. It's an item notice for public hearing. If finding a public convenience or necessity in Council District 13, a motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay, we do have cards on item number one. Let's call this special. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 18. Item number 18, there are four reports on the file, and a motion is required on that item, and I believe there's a request from Mr. Reyes to continue item number 11 for one week, and that would be November 17th.
Okay, members 2 through 18 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. We need a motion on item 18. Ms. Gruel.
I'd like to call it special, and we will have an amending motion or a clarifying motion that will come in.
Okay, Ms. Gruel calls item 18 special. Mr. Reyes moves continuance on item 11 without objections. Who ordered? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like to call item 13 special.
13 called special by Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti.
I'd just like to make the motion on item one. Oh, are there cards that call?
Item one, yeah, we're going to take public comment, item one. Items 2 through 18 still before us. Members, any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll and the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 19 through 37. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, item 19 through 37 now before us. I do have a card on item 34. Let's call that item special and hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed on those items. Any specials? 19 through 37, any requests for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Members, item 38 is a closed-session item. We'll hold that on the desk. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Going back to the items called special. Item number one was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, and I think some of these folks have also spoken under general public comment. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to move forthwith on 37.
Forthwith on 37. Again, coming back to item number one, do you have three speaker cards? Joshua Kaplan, Shirley Ash, and Jerry Pittman on item number one. Any need or desire to speak again?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Joshua Kaplan. I've been assisting the applicant in this process for about six months, and I just wanted to call to the attention of the council in deciding this matter, that it has gone through a full conditional use permit process, which has resulted in the imposition of 37 conditions to preclude any adverse impact on the public. But more importantly, it has a one-year review process and a five-year lifespan, so that this use would terminate at the end of five years if it were proven to be inconsistent with any future development in the area, would terminate in one year if it caused any problems. It is unique. It is conditioned as a 1930s-style jazz club in a subterranean location, so that there is absolutely no possibility of adverse impact, and it is consistent with the redevelopment of old Hollywood. So if there are any questions, I'd attempt to answer them, but that would complete my presentation.
Thank you very much. Shirley Ash, Jerry Pittman on this item. Did you wish to speak again? Go ahead, ma'am, this is item number one.
I'm so sorry. Well, once again, I am Shirley Ash, and as I mentioned, I have 35 years in the fashion industry here in Los Angeles, and I am a friend of MODAC, which is the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. It will represent past, present, and future designers of California. Our preferred location will be the downtown Herald Examiner Building, but we expect that that probably is several years off. What we are hoping for is to begin with what we are calling our jewels, and we are looking for locations where we would have gallery settings and repositories of books, archives, and fashion-related materials. Currently, we're holding 250,000 pieces of tangibles, a collection representing all aspects of the fashion industry. We have a plan for self-sufficiency, in addition to whatever support we get from any city organizations. And our plan to help these facilities and be self-sustaining are to keep up by selling...
Ma'am, let me ask you to pause for just a second. I know Mr. Garcetti wants to speak, and I'll apologize, colleagues. There were some confusions. Some of the cards that were put under item number one on today's agenda actually apply to item 34 from today's agenda. So they don't want to mix up the issues. I'll let you finish speaking if you like, but right now, we are dealing with item number one, regarding the application for a public convenience and necessity finding on sale alcohol, Nicole Entertainment, 1600 North Vine. So my apologies there. Any members of the public, members of the council, wish to speak on item number one? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. I think there was a mix-up about two different items. That was for item 34, which we will get to. I just rise in support of this application today, and like to move the determination, and I urge your support, colleagues.
Okay, there's nothing further. Let's open the roll on item number one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Mr. Labange.
Just take a moment. In the rear of the chambers, we have a great group from the Government Information Technology Agency from Korea. So we please salute you, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Come, Samidah. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I introduced this motion a while back. As you know, every city employee in the city of Los Angeles is able to fill out a card like this for an automatic payroll deduction for a donation to the charity of their choice. I thought it would be a great opportunity to allow city employees to choose, if they would like, to make a payroll deduction to the gang alternative program, which is a program in the city of Los Angeles that effectively works to keep kids out of gangs. And a lot of people fret about crime in the city of LA. We all talk about the need for more police officers. We all, as you know, every year during our budget process, we give dollars to the gang intervention teams that are really out there in the streets, in the trenches, trying to prevent gang violence in the city of Los Angeles. But I think the one place that needs more of our dollars is on the front end, and it's in prevention. Because if we can grow up a generation of kids that will choose not to join gangs, then maybe the hope is that someday we will actually deplete the membership possibilities of gangs. We know gangs thrive by membership and recruitment, and we also know that kids as young as the fourth grade begin to be recruited by gang members, and begin to allow themselves to feel like joining a gang is okay. Many of those kids never make it to their 15th birthday because they're involved in a culture that ultimately ends their life. I think it's a great opportunity for city employees to do something about crime prevention. And it's very simple. I'm going to fill one out to have, taken out of my biweekly check, a donation that will go to improving gangs. This is a program, I know you hear, all programs are good, all programs are effective, but in fact, this is really one of the only gang prevention programs. It goes into Los Angeles Unified School District in the fourth grade. It's a 12-week course that actually teaches kids how to stay out of gangs. Began in the Harbor area, in Wilmington and San Pedro, and we've been told that gang violent crimes have reduced, declined steadily in the Harbor area since this program has been in effect. We know it's not the only answer, but we think we are growing up a generation of kids who are choosing not to join a gang. And I think personally, that's the only way we will ever solve the gang violence problem in Los Angeles. So just wanted to highlight this opportunity, give people a way to feel like they actually are preventing crime in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 13 is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 18 called special by Councilmember Gruel, and there is a substitute motion that is in the process of being distributed.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the substitute motion that's being sent around is really a compilation of four separate committees it went to, and it makes some sense of that, and what we came forward with. Just over a year ago, I introduced a motion to discontinue the use of toll-free numbers in the city of Los Angeles. As Chair of the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee, my goal along with Councilmember Janice Hahn and Councilmember Jack Weiss is to develop common sense reform that will save the city money, freeing up scarce resources to effectively target our community's needs. We need efficiencies that are not only going to direct more money back to our communities, but also something that shows that we are much more efficient and delivers more services. The $0.5 million, $500,000 that we are saving with this common sense reform will be deposited into our newly-created police fund. Through small steps like saving half a million dollars, we can save taxpayer dollars and put more cops on the street. As many of you know, the city of Los Angeles has had a 3-1-1 number since November of 2002. What you may not have realized is that despite the establishment of 3-1-1, one call to City Hall hotline, we continue to have nearly 140 1-800 toll-free numbers still in operation. These 1-800 numbers cost the city more than a half a million dollars per year to operate. Not only is this an extremely cost-ineffective way of doing business, it's also very confusing to our constituents. And so today, we have an opportunity to, again, continue to publicize our 3-1-1 number. And last night, I was at a meeting on the West Side, actually, at UCLA, Mr. Weiss, and I asked many people if they knew about 3-1-1, or if they'd used it. And surprisingly, a lot of people had not, and I think we have our work cut out for us as well, to ensure we have more people known about the 3-1-1 system. But this is a plan, and I want to recognize Bill Fujoka and his team, for Maddie and David, who helped out with this. But this, every dollar, as we talk about, and we're trying to create more police, as we're talking about our budget in the upcoming year, if we can become more efficient, and we can save a half a million dollars here and a half a million dollars here, you end up having several million dollars. And so today, I ask for your support. I assume it will pass, with it going to four committees, that everyone's had their touch on it. But it is an opportunity for us to demonstrate to the public that we are going to become more efficient, we're going to save money, and we can add more officers with this half a million dollars we've saved today. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Ms. Gruel for what she's done, the amazing thing she's done with that committee, and in particular, for focusing on issues such as this one. You are saving the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. By the end of the day, I'm sure it'll be millions of dollars. Congratulations to you and your fine staff for finding these, whatever the opposite of diamonds in the rough are, rough in the diamonds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Can I have someone from ITA at the center table to discuss what good this is? Because I know it's interesting that you sometimes find something, as Jack mentioned, diamonds in the roughs, that it's like a softball almost, is really what it is, a softball right over the plate. We're now having the one call to City Hall, 3-1-1, and the elimination and consolidations of all these numbers. But also, the big thing is the frustration that the public sometimes has when they call, and in the past, they would get transferred. Give us, the council, a one-minute briefing on the importance of this, and how this will serve the people in this city when they call for city services.
3-1-1 has been very successful. You are correct, we are having a marketing problem that we're getting around. Water Empower is actually inserting, inserting into their bill starting November 5. So we're going to be reaching another 1.6 million residents. Right now, we're handling over 47,000 calls a month. Our ambassadors are handling double the calls they were a year ago, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community. When they call us about getting to the right place at the right time, or actually having their service addressed within the call center, we're only transferring about 50% of the calls out of the call center when we receive them. So we're trying to evolve from one call to City Hall, to one call actually does it all for the citizen.
Very good. Thank you very much. And if you need a suggestion to our Department of Transportation to put a little placard on the back of every Dash bus in the city, let us know, because it is simple. I think Mayor Hahn said at first, one call to City Hall does it all. And so I think that's important to have out there, because it shows efficiency. And I know I call, so please tell all the operators I said hello. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Thank you for taking that softball and hit it way over in the fence. Do you know who hit the longest home run in the history of professional baseball? Ted Williams. You know where he hit it? I know, it's my time still. I still got my time. Ted Williams. I just got to tell him, because it was such a softball. This was the kind of hit that Wendy just had here. He was playing in San Diego, and he hit the longest ball, went from LA, excuse me, went from San Diego to LA. Why? His homerun went over the fence of the old field in downtown San Diego, and hit a freight train, Santa Fe Freight. Ended up in LA. History. So you hit a long homerun here, Wendy, with this great consolidation. I just want to congratulate you. Slugger. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
History or trivia? It was a grand slam, though. No, that wasn't about you, Wendy, that was about... I just wanted to commend the staff. I've made many calls to 311, and the cell phone now seems to go through to 311. Never await, always professional, always courteous, handle that matter. And I wish we could do that with some of the other systems that we have. It has absolutely been a tremendous benefit to the people of Los Angeles. Obviously, the more people hear about it, the more it'll be used. But your ambassadors are doing a tremendous job with their attitude, their professionalism, and they seem to be happy there. I don't know where they're located. I know they're located someplace around here, and they seem to be very, very pleased, because that comes out in the projection of their voices and their attitude when they're dealing with issues, whether it's a pothole or some other issue that's being called in. And I, again, have used it many times. 110% satisfaction, so doing a great job. IT, I know there's new leadership there, and obviously, things are working out for the benefit of the people of LA. So congratulations to IT. And Wendy, thanks for coming up with a way to save the taxpayers more money to put into some other wonderful programs. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. I had one other question I forgot to ask, and I did want to mention that I've had a lot of people, just last night, that I didn't have as many people know about 3-1-1, but other parts of the city, and it's, I think, very important for all of us around this room, and all city employees, to encourage people to call 3-1-1. And in that same light, we had been working with some of the cell phone companies, because oftentimes, you see problems, I know I do, why I'm driving down the street and want to call 3-1-1, and we can't do that, only on a few. Could you give me just an update on where we are with those cell phone companies, those that have agreed to add 3-1-1 to their system, and those that we need to nudge a bit?
Yes. Immediately when we started, Singular and T-Mobile came on board. Shortly after that, we worked with Sprint and Nextel, so they are on board. Presently, Verizon and AT&amp;T, we still haven't been successful in getting them to provide that service to their customers. We've recently reached out again to AT&amp;T and Singular since they merged, and seeing if we can get a little bit more progress on that. So we are still working with them to try to get them to...
And as I mentioned to you, and I know Mr. Weiss, who's head of ITGS, would agree with me, that we need to push AT&amp;T to be part of this. They're also our provider for cell phones in the city of Los Angeles. So I think that that is critical as we move forward, because that's going to be the most effective way in which we can help our residents be able to report problems in their neighborhoods with 3-1-1. So please let me know on what we can do, and Mr. Weiss can as ITGS, to ensure that we have every single cell phone company offering the 3-1-1 service.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 18, the substitute motion, without objection. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 34 was called special for cards, and there's a substitute motion.
Mr. Garcetti, for a quick introduction?
Thank you. I want to welcome Los Angeles City College Professor Henry Ely, who's here with African-American Studies VII. If you would all please rise, we'd love to welcome you and have you here. It's great to see you. Got a couple LACC grads, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, others, so welcome, and best of luck to you, and thank you for coming down to City Council today.
Okay. So coming back to 34, and public comment. Now we're back on the same page, on the right page. Shirley Ash, Jerry Pittman, Irene Casmer, and Sherwin Ross. Will you please come forward on item 34?
Thank you. Thank you again. I'm honored to have the privilege to speak in front of you on behalf of the Los Angeles Museum of Designers and Creators. We are so grateful that you have amended the previous council action in connection with the surplus city library, and making it available. Honorable Labange, thank you so much for making this library available for an outstanding city purpose. We have been working on this project for three months. We've been fundraising, and we have a commitment from a prominent architect to design the library and make it a role model gallery, repository, and cultural center as an annex to the Los Angeles Museum of Designers and Creators to house a portion of the 250,000 items that have been collected since the 1800s to the present. The library will cater to our community. I live in the community. I pass this library every day. It's just been an eyesore. It will really, this would be an outstanding opportunity. We can have rotating exhibitions for the community on health, photography, fashion, and the history of California. This would be an outstanding destination for class trips, and an opportunity to create projects that would involve the fourth district. Let's bring some light, some happiness, to our neighborhood and the Melrose Corridor. It's really going downhill. I live right there on Vista and Melrose, and I can't... I live right there on Vista and Melrose, and I can't tell you, this would be really great for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Let's hear from the next speaker, please.
Thank you very much.
Good morning again. I'm lucky to have a third opportunity, and I'm speaking again on behalf of MODAC. As I mentioned earlier, I am Shirley Ash, and I'm an active designer here in Los Angeles and a friend of MODAC. MODAC being the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. We will represent the fashion industry here, the past, present, and future of California designers. Our preferred location will be the Downtown Herald Examiner Building. However, we're not expecting that to be available for us for the next several years. But to begin with, we would like to find locations around the city where we would have gallery settings and repositories of books, archives, and fashion-related materials. We are currently holding 250,000 pieces of tangibles, a collection representing all aspects of the fashion industry. And our plan for self-sufficiency to keep these facilities self-sustaining would be by selling articles of fashion and artwork, T-shirts bearing our MODAC logo with LA landmarks, that sort of thing. And we would teach basic how-to workshops at these facilities. Not a school, but we would have basic workshops where we might teach crochet, fabric applications, silk screening, needlework, and fashion illustration, that sort of thing. Anyway, we're looking for support, and we hope that we can get it here. And to follow up on some of the things that Mr. Ross said, we have written grants, and we do have promises considering to give us a grant for $250,000, which perhaps will be coming up in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning again. My name's Jerry Pittman, and I just wanted to tell you that since it's a library issue, we do have new members in the MODAC group. It's the Women's Club of Hollywood. It's between 100 and 200 members. Irene and I just did a, helped them do a fashion show for their fundraiser, and they are all joining in with us in supporting us. And one of their first projects that they ever did was a library for the city of Los Angeles. So just, those are new people that are supporters, and I wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Good morning, or good noon. I'm not sure what time it is. I'm Irene Kazmer, and I'm the founder of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. In fact, my new name is really the developer, because those get respect. Okay? So now I am the developer of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. Anyway, it's nice to talk to you here, and I wonder if everybody has the letter that I wrote to His Honor Yaroslavski, and he knows about the museum because he was downtown Los Angeles in City Hall when he voted for it to be in the Examiner Building, and that still has to come. And I'm working with him to take it out of the lawsuit, and maybe we can eminent domain it, and I am raising funds, maybe $10 million worth to put down a down payment, so we, they don't demolish it, or they don't put apartments. Not that I don't want apartments, but that is a crown of downtown, and it shouldn't be apartments. But anyway, it should be the museum, just the way the strategic plan of downtown set. You have a letter from His Honor Yaroslavski, or to him, because on the phone they told me that they would give us $250,000 to towards purchasing the library on Gardner Street, and I wonder if you would like to talk to us? I bring a whole board in and see that we secure that library and start our first downtown, we'll have the crown of the industry.
Thank you.
The jewels in the crown, I'm finished right now. The jewels in the crown would be the satellites, and I want a satellite of a gallery in everybody's district. Thank you very, very much for listening to me. I hope you all agree with me, and not only with me, but you agree with the whole industry that wants to do something wonderful for the city of LA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item 34. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Labange.
Members, as you know, in our last budget, which we all adopted, there were several items in that budget called for to support our library system. In supporting our library system, it called for the sale of abandoned libraries direct to fund back the library system. I'd like to call on our city librarian Fontaine Holmes, maybe Mr. Fujioke, if you'd like to contribute to this here. Brent Loeschneider from the Bureau of Sanitation, and if you would come up and explain to the council what the process here is going on. And I want to thank all the public speakers for their passion and their concepts as they spoke so eloquently. Ms. Holmes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Fontaine Holmes, the city librarian. Thank you, Councilwoman Labange. Good morning, President Padilla and council members. The city of Los Angeles has accomplished what no other city in the nation has accomplished in building public libraries. In the past three years and three months, 30 new branch library facilities have been opened throughout this city. The funds to design and construct and purchase property for these libraries was approved by the voters in Los Angeles. 73% of the voters approved Proposition DD, a bond issue that funded all the new libraries. But the proposition only funds land acquisition, design, and construction. And each year, the library department, as part of the budget process, has come to the mayor and the council to request funding to furnish and equip the new libraries, to purchase books and other library resources for the new libraries, and to add staff. And each year, the mayor, this mayor, and this city council has supported public library service in this city. And this year, of course, has been a particularly difficult budget year. And as Councilwoman Labange introduced this, it is true, we have five more libraries to open. Chatsworth Branch, Fairfax Branch, Hyde Park, Little Tokyo, and Westwood. And in order to open those libraries with the resources and the furniture and equipment that we need, it is imperative that the old libraries, and there are six that we moved out of because the sites were too small to build the new libraries on, that these be sold. They are included as revenue in the library's budget in order to open the new libraries. And as such, the Board of Library Commissioners approved the sale of the properties, turned it over to the Department of General Services for the auction sale. And between the time that that happened and the auction, which is coming up, a city department, the Department of Sanitation, identified an important use for the property and is willing to pay fair market value for the property so that the library can behold.
Madam CAO, would you like to, or Mr. CAO?
Quick comments, as Fontaine's, Fontaine's, I was thinking of someone else. Fontaine stated that this is a critical element in the library department's budget. It's something that we do need to look at as we're, as demands for the county, the city general fund is increasing. I think we've heard a number of very critical demands, and this is important. We fully support your motion that will allow the sanitation to purchase this facility, but it will help and go a long way towards supporting the library department.
Good, thank you. Mr. Loeschneider from Bureau of Sanitation Public Works?
Yes, thank you. As you know, the Bureau of Sanitation operates one of the largest sewer collection systems in the United States, if not the world. And in the past, we have focused on areas of that collection system, which is about 6,500 miles long, that we think need to...
6,500 miles long, so that's like here in New York and back?
Exactly, right. That need attention. Now, the area that we've been focusing in most recently have been to relieve hydraulic choke points. And just this morning, you celebrated the completion of ESIS. But with ESIS and some of the other large projects out of the way, we think that it's time now to move on to some of the other problems, notably odors. We do have several areas throughout the city that we're starting to study and try to identify solutions where we have a high incidence of odor complaints, and this area is one of those areas. We've received 40 odor complaints roughly in the last year due to high pressures that occur in the sewer lines in this area. And we've studied this area thoroughly. The sewer lines that cause these odors are very large lines. They really can't be designed and rebuilt without major cost and impact to the entire area. So the best solution, we think, is to build an odor treatment facility that would relieve the pressure. As it turns out, the library is an ideal location for this need. It's situated right where we have the highest pressures, and it also happens to be adjacent to these sewer lines. So it makes it very easy for us to tie into these high-pressure areas and relieve the pressure.
In designing this, what, if any, land could be available for any community use?
At this time, we're not sure exactly what the final design would look like. What we have been stating all along is that we would develop a concept of the plan, bring it back to the community, to your office, and to the council to make sure that everyone buys in on that. And in that process, I think we could certainly look at what other land could be made available for community purposes and explore those options fully.
And it could be compatible at a children's playground or something like this, possibly?
I think those are possibilities, yes.
But this investment that sanitation's making is going to improve, because I know, I think it's on Courtney, which is to the west, and some of the other streets. I personally spoke to people about the challenges they have because of the problems with the system and the smells.
Absolutely. There are people that are greatly impacted by the odors. At one of the community meetings that we attended to get feedback, we spoke to one resident that lived right on Sierra Benita. She understood firsthand the impact from the odors and was basically supportive of the idea.
And we go forward from this. Direct check to the library department to help the library system, approved by the CAO, always approved by the city attorney, and then you go right back out to that community to work on how this design would be. So members, this is an opportunity for us to solve a problem. It doesn't meet the needs of our four distinguished speakers, but it does need to meet the general population and our library department. Members, I ask for an eye vote, and I thank you all, speakers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard?
Eye vote on the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Ettravaria.
On this item? If not, the substitute motion has been circulated. We'll consider that without objection. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Grue requests to be excused Friday, November 12th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. that meets for city business, that meets council policy.
Ms. Grue is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, November 19th, to leave at 11:15 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Carreras moves. Mr. Garcetti is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The item before council is item number 38, and that's authorizing payment and judgment in the case of GeoCon Inc. versus City of Los Angeles. And then the amount is $1,674.23.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
How fast? How fast do they cut a check?
You have to ask the controller of that question, Mr. Labange.
Huh?
You have to ask the controller of that question.
Well, how fast is the controller? So the controller, okay. I just want to know how fast, because if you need interest to save, it may mean a little difference to some playground somewhere in this.
Every day earlier than December 31st, we save $233.60.
Okay. That has been sent forthwith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Members, it's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let people in the 10th Council District know about three events taking place this Saturday. Saturday, November 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the 10th District Public Safety Fair will take place. There's going to be a number of panel discussions, representatives from the Department of Homeland Security, LAPD, LA Fire, the District Attorney's Office, the City Attorney's Office will be on hand to present information and take questions. And I want to thank members of my Public Safety Commission. Also, later that morning, the Youth and Parent Together Fair will take place, being organized by the 10th District Youth Commission. That'll be this Saturday, November 13th, from 11:00 until 3:00 p.m. at the SGI Friendship Center, 5899 Venice Boulevard. And we're encouraging all young people and parents to come out. And just an additional piece of information, the safety fair will be held at 24th Street Elementary School, 255 West, 24th Street in West Adams. And then last but not least, the 10th District Housing Commission will be holding a housing commission fair in the park. This will be held at Rancho Cienega Park, 5001 Rodeo Road, near Jefferson and La Brea. This will take place from 12:00 noon until 4:00 p.m. So we'd like to encourage people in the district and from other communities, if they so desire, to come out and enjoy some interesting information and some fun activities.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, thanks again for bringing those great Marines in to these chambers this morning. And as we know, tomorrow is Veterans Day. Before, it was the 11th hour at the 11th, day of the 11th month, ended World War I and the armistice. We salute our veterans for that, and I want to salute Officer Curry, who's our sergeant here, who's a veteran of the United States Marines, and all city employees who are veterans, and ask that we all remember our veterans on Veterans Day and remind you that in the 4th District, invited to all throughout the city in Southern California, Forest Lawn Memorial Park will have a celebration honoring our veterans hosted by Stan Chambers at 11 o'clock tomorrow at Forest Lawn Memorial Park, north of Griffin Park in the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And you're absolutely right, many city employees who have served in the military, some of which will be participating at the first annual Veterans Day Parade in the San Fernando Valley, among those being Deputy Chief Bergman, head of the Valley Bureau, as one of the grand marshals. Every major conflict has a grand marshal, so they have a Desert Storm Grand Marshal, Vietnam Grand Marshal, World War II Grand Marshal. In the process of organizing and promoting this event, we even got a call from a World War I veteran who we're arranging transportation for, so he can participate because he's now wheelchair-bound. So it's been a tremendous experience getting this far in the organizing of this first event. The parade will begin tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. along Doyle Canyon Boulevard, coming from Hubbard to near Paxton Street in Pacoima, so from Silmar to Pacoima, ending in a fair at Ritchie Valens Park. Mr. Carreras.
Thank you. And after going to the parade tomorrow, you can go to the Veterans Candlelight Vigil, which we're having at the Marvin Browdy Center, which is on the corner of Van Nuys and Sylvan, at 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard. Last year was the first year that we held it, and it was a success. We had members of family speak on behalf of the soldiers that were in Iraq at the time. We also had veterans who wrote poems, and they read them out loud, and we had some testimony from people showing and expressing their appreciation for our veterans. So it was a great opportunity for the community to come together, and it's being held in the San Fernando Valley in the courtyard at the Marvin Browdy Center at 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard tomorrow night, November 11th, Thursday, at 7:00 p.m. All are welcome. We will have refreshments and goodies for the children and anybody who comes to make it comfortable and a refreshing event. Thank you.
Ms. Zakowski.
For those who are on the West Side, there's also going to be the Veterans
For those who are on the West Side, there's also going to be the Veterans Day Parade through the VA and also starting on San Vicente Boulevard, honoring a number and ending at the Veterans Hospital there. Very, very large attendance in years past and because of the VA, you've got almost parade grounds that are set for it. But I think obviously throughout the city and the county, there are going to be many, many events for which people can pay tribute tomorrow. And you were mentioning former city employees and I think it's just appropriate today that we also mentioned that we have current city employees who are in the reserves, who are serving. As we are seeing some of the pictures, as Councilmember Hahn talked about earlier today, some of our employees are putting themselves today in harm's way in doing that duty and I think we should recall them as well.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I also wanted to announce that we'll be holding our second annual luncheon for the veterans who live in Central City East in the Skid Row community at the Jim Woods Center, James Woods Center on San Julian, 12 o'clock. We'll have a sit-down luncheon and a movie and some entertainment to express our appreciation for the veterans living in the Skid Row community.
Ms. Zine.
And regarding meals, I want to acknowledge the Canoga Park Women's Club. They're going to be honoring our veterans this Saturday at their facility in Canoga Park. It's an annual luncheon and the veterans from World War I, World War II attend. And the Women's Club has done this every year, so I want to acknowledge and thank them for doing that once again this year. That'll be this Saturday, Canoga Park Women's Club honoring our veterans with a luncheon.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Other announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have adjourned motions today? Please rise for adjourned tributes. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would ask that all of us adjourn today in the memory of Fernando Di Bernardo, who died just this past Monday at the age of 106. He was born on the Italian island of Ischia in the Bay of Naples, and he first came to San Pedro in 1915 with his brothers. Because it reminded him of home and because of the friendliness of the Italian community, he knew he'd found a new home in San Pedro. Fernando's life story is an example of the family histories of many of our San Pedro immigrants, especially fishermen from Italy and Croatia, who left their homeland in search for a new life for their families. It was along the coast of San Pedro that they felt at home and reminded them of their homeland. Fernando was a legend in the San Pedro fishing community. He worked faithfully alongside his brother Antonio for many years on their fishing boat, the Santa Maria. Losing his first wife in 1963, he later married Filomenia Di Bernardo and leaves behind her and nine children, all of whom continue to live in San Pedro, 21 grandchildren and 32 great-grandchildren. His children are all active members of the San Pedro community. They're involved in real estate, the fishing industry, lawyers. His great-nephew is Mike Di Bernardo, who works in the marketing division at the Port of Los Angeles and who worked very closely with me as we tried to craft this historic opportunity to open the gates at the Port of Los Angeles 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Funeral services will be Friday morning at Mary Star of the Sea Church in San Pedro. Our community will really miss Fernando Di Bernardo and we join his incredible family today in mourning their loss. And thank you very much. I think it's fitting that we honor his legacy as a true San Pedro pioneer.
Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask colleagues that we adjourn today in memory of David Lyon, who died November 2nd of lung cancer. He's the father of Jason Lyon, who's been here in city council, one of the co-chairs of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council and a member of the East Planning, East Area Planning Commission. Jason and his partner are expecting next month their first child and unfortunately, they will only know, or this child will only know his or her grandfather through stories. Jason wanted David Lyon to be remembered as a lifelong Democrat who never missed voting in a presidential election, including this one. He died on Election Day, but on the day before Election Day, he cast his medical ballot from his hospital bed. He was 64 years old. He's survived by his wife Kathy, his daughter Dawn Lombard, two sons-in-law, two grandsons, and of course, his son, Jason Lyon. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with great sadness that we adjourn in memory of Jack Rohan, who passed away October 17th, 2004. Mr. Rohan was one of the original neighborhood watch organizers in Valley Glen, who helped make that community a safer place to live. He made community policing part of his everyday work. He gave selfishly of his time to Los Angeles and he will be missed by his family and friends. He's survived by his wife Connie Rohan and his sons Jay and Jim Rohan. Thank you.
Other tributes? Mr. Labange.
Members, been informed by the Information Technology Department, Mr. Weiss I spoke with earlier, that Michael Baker, city employee of 25 years, unfortunately collapsed at his work yesterday in his office. Efforts to revive him were for naught, but he was tragically lost his life yesterday here at work at ITA. He was a 25-year veteran of the city service. He has a mother who lives in Banning, California, and a sister who lives in New York. He was a joyful employee who always provided a lot of inspiration for his coworkers, as told by members of the ITA, when he would have a lot of candy at his desk and they always sweeten things up, as remembered to him. He was involved with the Business Applications Division of ITA and I ask that we adjourn in memory of Michael Baker, city employee.
All members. Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, request we adjourn in memory of Marie Martin, passed away October 3rd. Marie Martin was born in Peterborough, Canada. She was only permanent and first female president of Pierce College. Marie Martin died of natural causes at the age of 96. She served as president of Pierce College from 1966 to 1970. She later was named deputy in charge of community colleges in the Department of Housing Education and Welfare in Washington, D.C. Marie Martin came to Pierce when the enrollment was 13,507. She was a great speaker and a great leader and the whole college was impressed by her, says her former colleague, Assistant Dean Herb Revtek. She'll be greatly missed by all of her family and friends and she is survived by a son, Bill Martin. May Marie Martin rest in peace.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much.